A quorum being present, the annual town meeting will come to order. Please, first, please join me again in thanking The Sound Waves and Director Ben Eisnogel for that wonderful performance. They are truly amazing. We'll omit reading the return of the warrant, which shows that it was properly served. I ask that all who can rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I submit the following memorial resolution. Whereas the citizens of Manchester-by-the-Sea note with profound regret the deaths of several of their friends and neighbors during the past year, and seek to recognize and acknowledge their varied contributions to the town's commonwealth and welfare and our mutual sense of community, we citizens hereby salute the departed, acknowledge our common indebtedness to them, extend the sympathy of the town to their intimates and survivors, and declare that this resolution be entered in the town archives and a true copy be sent to the appropriate survivors. The persons memorialized and their achievements are proclaimed in the order of the dates of their deaths. Catherine Allard, library volunteer; Sandra Lee Gillis, substitute teacher; Ronald Master Giacomo, planning board chair, community preservation committee, water resource protection task force, and Donovan Park Committee; Bruce McDonald, fire chief and housing authority; and Atlee Lucas-Samolchuk, Department of Public Works. Ann Harrison, the Chair of the Select Board moves the resolution as read, and John Round, the Vice Chair, seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the unanimous, memorial resolution is unanimously adopted. I ask that all who can rise and observe a moment of silence in memory of these former Now we'll conduct elections to the town's ancient and honorary offices. First, I ask for nominations for pound keeper. Just call it out.
John Jay.
John Jay.
Jake's.
Jake's, sorry. And nominations are closed. All in favor of John Jake's, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And John is a unanimously elected pound keeper. We'll now take nominations for two fence viewers.
Fred Rossi.
Jack Ryan.
Fred Rossi and Jack Ryan. All in favor of Fred Rossi and Jack Ryan for fence viewer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And they're unanimously elected. Now nominations for two field drivers.
Robert Wilworth.
Robert Wilworth.
Mike Coolidge.
Mike Coolidge.
Cooley.
Cooley, sorry. All in favor of those residents for field driver, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And they're elected. And one nomination for one measure of lumber.
Alan Wilson.
I'm sorry, I'm not a candidate. Another nomination for measure of lumber. Couldn't hear that one more time, sorry.
Ryan Parker.
Ryan Parker. All in favor of Ryan Parker for measure of lumber, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And he's elected. And finally, one measure of wood and bark.
Jody Morse.
Jody Morse. Nominations are closed. All in favor of Jody Morse for measure of wood and bark, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And she is elected. And that concludes the election of our traditional officers. I'll briefly state our customary procedural points. There are several stationary microphones around the room. If you want to speak, please go to the mic nearest your seat, wait to be recognized, and then give the meeting your name and address if we don't already have them. I'm Alan Wilson. I ask that you stand when you speak, if you can, and this applies to town officials at the front, as well as to those on the floor of the meeting. The tellers also have portable mics for anyone who might have difficulty reaching the stationary ones. If that's the case, please raise your hand and we'll make sure a microphone comes to you. We're using closed captioning for this meeting. It will be displayed on the two large screens in front of the stage. Speakers must remember to direct their remarks to me as moderator and not to other town officials or voters. They must also limit their remarks to two minutes or less unless they've received my permission in advance to speak longer. My intention is to call on every voter who desires to speak on an issue before the meeting. But if the motion for the previous question, the motion to cut off debate, is properly introduced and seconded, under the rules we follow, it's not debatable. I'll call directly for a vote without further discussion. And I'll accept the motion for the previous question only when a voter rises and is recognized solely for that purpose. I won't accept this motion from one who makes a statement on the merits and then moves to close the door on opposing views. We should have, you should have picked up a blue card like this as you checked in. It identifies you as a voter. If the electronic voting system should fail and we have a counted hand vote, please hold up your card to make sure you're counted. Most matters require a majority vote. The motion for the previous question requires two-thirds, and by statute, borrowing money and most amendments to the zoning bylaw also require two-thirds. Certain other questions require two-thirds, or in some cases, a greater proportion, and I will explain those if they arise. Non-voters are permitted to attend the meeting with the consent of the moderator. We have with us tonight Gregory Fetterspiel, Town Administrator, the heads of all departments who are available to answer questions, Pamela Bodwin, Superintendent of the Manchester-Essays Regional School District, Michelle Cresta, Director of Finance and Operations for the Regional School District, Michelle Randazzo, Town Council with KP Law. All these people have my permission to be here and to speak if needed. We also have with us three special guests. Harry Pape, the Moderator of Princeton, Rebecca Townsend, the Moderator of Longmellow, and Mark DeSalvo, the Moderator of North Andover. Harriet and Rebecca are past presidents of the Massachusetts Moderators Association, and Mark is the current president. I'm honored and grateful for their presence. Please join me in welcoming them. Once we've established a quorum, as we now have, Alaswoma Quorum continues to be present until it's challenged and found lacking by an actual count. The procedures we follow reflect provisions of the Massachusetts Acts and General Laws, Article 2 of the town's general bylaw, a book called Town Meeting Time and the Traditions of the Town. It's unlawful to smoke on school grounds. I ask that you turn off or mute cell phones and other electronic devices. The meeting is being videotaped by 1623 Studios and is also being recorded. I want to thank the following individuals who assisted Town Clerk Christine Dixon in preparing for the meeting, and also those who were serving as volunteers tonight. Allison Anhold White, Jeffrey Bodmer Turner, Eileen Bonner, Muffin Driscoll, Martha Farmer, Ellen Flatley, Bruce Journey, Tom Keigho, Carolyn Kelly, Judy Lopes, Kurt Melden, Melanie Oldeman, Elaine Persons, Bob Ryan, Kathy Ryan, Lee Simmons, Chris Thomas, Pamela Thorne, Whitney Turner, Gretchen Wood assisting me by timing speakers, and Tiffany Marletta running the electronic voting system. Thank you all for serving the town. We might, we might call them Christine's Army. I now recognize Ann Harrison, the Chair of the Select Board.
This is the last Manchester town meeting for two of the town's leaders. Greg Fetterspiel, the Town Administrator, and Alan Wilson, our longtime moderator. Other than you, who come here to decide on the town's spending and bylaws, Alan and Greg are the most important people here. The town will celebrate Greg's achievements at the Charter House on Thursday, June 26th. I hope to see many of you there. Tonight, I want to talk about Alan Wilson and the 30 years that he has been the town moderator. You may think, "Well, what's so hard about being a town moderator? You stand up in front of the meeting a couple of times a year." You have no idea. Alan spends months preparing for each meeting, making sure that every article and every motion is in the best and most correct form. He also decides how many chairs to rent, what room or rooms to use. He tests the audio and video and, and voting systems, makes sure that there's water for those of us on the dais. Our town council says that he's the best prepared of all the moderators she works with. The preparation is the reason that the Manchester Town Meetings are so short on drama. His innovations have improved our meetings. One of the first changes was to ask the meeting to reduce the quorum from 200 to 100. In previous years, sometimes the constables had to be sent out to find basketball court player, basketball players to fill up the quorum. The lower quorum seems to have got everybody's attention. You know, if you're not there, somebody else will be, and they may not vote the way you want. There has not been a delay waiting for quorum since. More recently, he introduced closed captioning, which is a remarkable help for people who have trouble hearing. The most significant change, perhaps in the history of town meetings in Massachusetts, was the introduction of electronic voting. Like many of you, I kind of miss looking around to see who's voting which way. However, the meeting is better with instant private voting than with cards and tellers, not to speak of the few private votes where the whole meeting had to fill out a ballot, march out of the room, drop the ballot in a box, come back, and wait for them to be counted. Being a pioneer in a new technology is not easy. Alan has insisted that every glitch be investigated and every failure corrected. Then, in 2020, the town was hit with COVID-19. For the first time in anyone's memory, the annual town meeting was delayed and then held outdoors in June, just in time for the new fiscal year on January, on July 1st. Alan not only coordinated the effort to pull together Manchester's town meeting, but worked with the Manchester Moderators Association to develop protocols that all towns could use. In honor of that effort and many others Alan has made to help all towns cope with 21st century problems, three past presidents of the Association are here tonight to help us congratulate Alan on a job well done. Following town tradition, Alan's 30 years of service would earn him three and a third commemorative cheers. The town, in an excess of frugality, is offering him only one. Could Greg, could you and, and someone, thank you. Michelle Randazzo, our Town Council, has, and would you like to say a word or two? I will yield the podium, if you will yield to Bruce Tar at the end.
First.
No, you come, you, you first, because you're going to be short.
Thank you all again. For those who don't know me, Michelle Randazzo, from Town Council's office. I have had the pleasure of working with Alan for the past 20 years, and he has certainly put me through my paces. Alan, as Ann said, likes to be precise, prepared, and it certainly does show in your town meeting. You make my job easy, Alan, and I will certainly miss you. From all of us at KP, just a very small token of our appreciation, so you don't have to spend time opening it, I'll tell you what it is. It's a personalized leather-bound journal, so you can start writing your memoirs from town meeting, tales from town meeting. I think it will be a bestseller.
Thank you very much, and, Mr. Moderator, through you to the members of town meeting. I have to say that you just raised almost a tear in my eye when I realized that this is probably the last time that you will introduce me at this town meeting. And it has been a long journey for both of us. I was a young man when you started. So was I. Together, we have experienced the wonderful, the wonderful experience of direct democracy in the form of town meeting in this community, and I have always been appreciative and amazed by your incredible skills. Because town meeting is one of those ways that voters have direct enfranchisement, the ability to come into a room, discuss the issues, and make decisions directly affecting the future of the town. But that only works if there is proper engagement, proper respect for every perspective, the ability for everyone to offer their opinion, and for some, not too, for not too long. And really, in many ways, Alan, you're somewhat akin to a conductor for an orchestra. Because you bring us all into this room, you make sure that we respect order, you make sure that we respect the law, but you help us all to harmonize in a way that represents the very best of direct democracy. And you do it with attention to detail, you do it with incredible skill. I've often been amazed at your ability to maintain a monotone voice when people are being very passionate, and, and there's a lot of, a lot of passion in the room. But all the while, you have been the person that has ensured that these town meetings are run appropriately and everybody has the chance to participate fairly in the government of this town. And there can never be enough appreciation expressed for what you have done over these many years for that to be able to happen. But I hope, as you're wrapping up your tenure as our town moderator, that you'll be able to reflect on all of the chapters that you have helped to write in the history of Manchester by the sea, all of the storms that we've been able to weather, all of the good times where we've been able to direct prosperity to wise investments like the school that we're in right now, all of the many things that you have had a hand in that makes this community great and will continue to make it great well into the future. So it is a bit of a bittersweet moment for me to be able to come and recognize the fact that this will be your last town meeting. But it is not bittersweet to celebrate your public service, what it means to all of us, your partnership, what it means to all of us, and your shining example in a time when we need shining examples of public service, and to realize that you have provided us with one of the best. And so, Mr. Moderator, I do have citations. I actually bear the, bring the greetings of our state representative, Ann Margaret Ferranti, who could not be with us tonight, but I have with me her citation as well. And I'm pleased to tell you that in an era where sometimes this isn't as easy, you have managed to unite the House and the Senate, and you have united the Republicans and the Democrats, all in behalf of Town Moderator Alan Wilson. And so, I'm going to read these, if you'll indulge me, and then I'd be honored to come up and, and present these to you personally. And so, from myself and my colleagues in the Senate, we have an official citation which reads, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Alan Wilson, Town Moderator, in recognition of your 30 years of dedicated and committed service to the town of Manchester by the sea. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success." I suspect there could be many roles for you in the future, Alan. One of them could be as a consultant to other town moderators. That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by our clerk. And these are signed by Senate President Karen Spilka, attested to by our clerk, Michael Hurley. And I am proud to have sponsored this one on April 28th of 2025. Now, wait, there's more. So... You're way over two minutes already. This is the last opportunity I'm going to get to test your boundaries, and I'm going to take full advantage of every minute of it. So, the next one is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, and it reads, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Alan Wilson. In recognition of your 30 years as town moderator in Manchester, the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors." And I note, Alan, that the chair that was presented to you just moments ago is not a rocking chair, and it does not have a seatbelt. So I expect that we will continue to see your active engagement in the affairs of this community, and I hope that that is the case. This is given, "The entire membership extends the best wishes. It's given this 28th day of April 2025 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, by Ronald Mariano, the Speaker of the House, and offered by our friend and representative, Ann Margaret Ferranti." And Alan, again, I am pleased to be here. I'm using up as much time as I possibly can, because it's going to be my last chance. But I really, of all the things that I want to say at this microphone, you are a consummate professional, you have commanded the respect of all of us, but of all the things I could say, I'm proudest to call you a friend. Congratulations, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Michelle. And thank you all. Gretchen, stop me if I go over. Being moderator has been one of the great joys of my life. I think it's the best job in town government. I love the work, I've enjoyed the challenges, but most of all, I've treasured the opportunity to work with so many fellow residents and town employees to do the town's work. I would never have known them in any other way. I couldn't be more grateful for the support I've received from the voters, both during and after town meetings, and at 30 consecutive town elections. At a time when civility in public life is becoming more and more rare, I'm proud of our tradition of respectful debate. I was fortunate when I was first elected that my predecessor, Archie Southgate, helped me learn the ropes. He frequently gave me guidance in those first few years, and I will always remember that fondly. I've told Eli that if he's elected, and I don't want to jinx him, I will do everything I can to make the transition smooth and seamless. Thank you all again. Now we have some business to do. The best way to follow the progress of the meeting is with the annual report of the Finance Committee. You should have one like this. The pamphlet contains all the warrant articles and the recommendations of the Select Board and Finance Committee. They were mailed to every household, and there were extras at the check-in stations. There were also several handouts you should have received as you checked in. The first contains the Regional School Committee's three motions under Article 6. It's especially important to have that one, because we'll be using it to vote. So if you don't have it, please raise your hand and one of the tellers will give it to you. There were also handouts from the Planning Board on the zoning amendments, from residents who support the school committee's recommended budget, and one from the proponents of Article 20 relating to road deticides. We'll be voting electronically at this meeting. You should have received a keypad like this when you checked in. We're going to use the keypads for all votes. When you leave, please exit through the lobby where you checked in so we can be sure to collect all the handsets. Alan notes when the voting period for each motion opens and ends. While we're voting, a box in the corner of the screen behind me will also show the 15-second voting period counting down. Press 1 to vote yes, 2 to vote no, or 3 to abstain on the motion under consideration. If you change your mind, just press another button. The computer records only your last choice. When the voting period ends, the screen will show the number of yes and no votes and abstentions and will display the totals graphically. You'll also be able to see the voting display on the portable screens around the room. The handsets are in sleep mode until a button is pressed, so the screen will be blank until you vote. After you vote, the LED in the upper right corner will turn green, indicating that your vote was received, and the screen will display 1A for yes, 2B for no, or 3C to abstain. The device then goes back to sleep. The town clerk and her team checked the handsets thoroughly and tested them all, so it's very unlikely that any will fail to work. But if you don't see the appropriate display after voting, or you experience any other problem, you can go back to the check-in station and get another. We'll conduct two test votes now to make sure everyone is comfortable with the system. First question, you may remember this from last year. Will the Celtics win the NBA championship again? Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, or 3 to abstain, and the voting period is open. And the vote is 270 yes and 56 no. We're an optimistic crowd. Second question, have you bought your singing beach tags yet? Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, or 3 if you're over 65 and you don't need a beach tag. Voting period is open. 145 yes, 96 no, and 86 are over 65. All right. Just remember, there are only two days left to buy your beach tags at the discounted price. Are there any questions about how to vote electronically? The voting system will produce an anonymous log of how each handset was used on each vote. Any voter who wishes will be able to go to the town clerk's office and determine how his or her votes were recorded. The town will not create a record linking voters' names with individual handsets, so all votes are secret. That means if you want to check your voting record with the town clerk, you'll need to save the device's identifier. It's the six-character alphanumeric code on the back of the handset, following the words "device ID" next to the QR code. If you have a smartphone, just take a photo of the back of the clicker. If there are no questions about electronic voting, we'll go to Article 1. This concerns reports of town boards and committees. And Catherine Bellotta moves, and John Round seconds. The article is presented in the warrant. Is the meeting ready to vote? In favor, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstain, press 3. And voting is open. So the motion is approved. Article 2 concerns the salary and compensation of elective officers of the town. Ann Harrison moves, and Jeffrey Delaney seconds. The article is presented in the warrant. Meeting ready to vote? In favor, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstain, press 3. I think we're going to have to do that again. We wouldn't, we wouldn't want a mistake on the compensation of elected officials. Okay, is it open?[592.29][592.29](pause) And voting period is open. We're having a little technical difficulty here.[611.62][611.62](pause) 335 yes, 8 no, and 18 abstain. Article 3 is the appropriation for the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District. And Jeffrey Delaney moves, and Brian Solace second, that the town raise and appropriate $176,418 to be funded by taxation for the purpose of funding the town's share of the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District. Is there discussion? If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstain, press 3. 346 yes, 12 no, and 12 abstentions. So the motion is approved. Article 4 contains the operating budget requests of town departments and committees, and includes the recommendations of the Finance Committee and the Select Board. The report also contains the Finance Committee's recommended source of funding for each item. The requests and recommendations are found at pages 21 through 25 of the Finance Committee pamphlet. And Ann Harrison moves, and Sarah Melish seconds, that the town raise by taxation or otherwise to pay town debts and charges for the ensuing 12 months, effective July 1, 2025, and appropriate the same, the amounts presented in the Expenses Budget Summary section under the Recommended and Funding Sources columns of the Finance Committee Report, page 25 under Article 4. Provided, however, that with prior approval of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, the town administrator is authorized to transfer unexpended funds within a summary category, for example, within general government. The Select Board and Finance Committee both recommend approval. And I recognize Sarah Melish for comments on behalf of the Finance Committee. And I've told her that she can have more than two minutes.[792.61][792.61](pause)
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. I thank Alan for appointing me to the Finance Committee in 2011. One of the many things I learned from him is people hear more when fewer words are spoken. So I hope I won't disappoint tonight. The budget will result in a 3.4% tax rate increase, slightly less than that was reflected in our booklet due to revised school district budget with lower health insurance costs. This represents an increase of about 1.5% for the town and 1.9% for the school district. The Finance Committee appreciates the efforts of department heads managing their budgets to contain costs. This budget includes adjustments to some department head salaries to reflect the current market, and some staffing changes are, as explained on Page 5 of the FinCom booklet. It adds the responsibility of finance director to the town accountant, creating a finance department to include accounting, treasurer, collector, and assessor offices, and increase the responsibility of some positions to improve business continuity, management of town financial matters, and to give the town administrator more time to focus on strategic initiatives. In addition, the clerk and the town's clerk office will become full-time to support increased citizens' requests, especially public record requests. The budget adds a deputy fire chief in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year to improve coverage, public safety prevention programs, and provide business continuity. Staffing increases in the Public Safety Department over the past few years seem to have finally brought overtime under control. Finally, the budgets for the Appeals Board, Planning Board, Historic District Commission, and Conservation Commission are consolidated under Land Use Management. The town remains in strong financial position with adequate reserves, a AAA bond rating, and maintains a fiscally prudent budget while delivering the desired services to the residents. Thank you.[954.25][954.25](end of transcript)
Thank you, Sarah. I'll now go through Article 4 by major budget category such as general government, and read the total amount recommended for that category by the Finance Committee. If any voter wants to ask a question or change the Finance Committee's recommendation on any line item within that category, please call out "hold," and we'll stop and identify the item number. If any voter wishes to change the Finance Committee's recommended amount on any line item, we'll take those changes as amendments to the main motion and vote on each one separately. When we've finished all the holds, we'll then vote on the main motion as amended if there are any changes. Until we've finished all action on Article 4, reconsideration of an individual item will not require the two-thirds vote ordinarily applicable. General Government, 35.68% of Article 4, Items 1 through 32. Are there any holds under General Government? Public Safety, 26.12% of Article 4, Items 33 through 50. Are there any holds under Public Safety? Public Works, 14.66% of Article 4, Items 51 through 60. Are there any holds under Public Works? Other Environmental, Item 61 through 65. Total recommended for Other Environmental is zero. As Sarah mentioned, this and several other categories have been consolidated into one. Are there any holds under Other Environmental? Human Services, 2.63% of Article 4, Items 66 through 71. Any holds under Human Services? Library, 3.21% of Article 4, Items 72 and 73. Any holds on Library? Recreation, 2.7% of Article 4, Items 74 through 83. Any holds under Recreation? Debt Service is 4.9% of Article 4. It's Item 84. Does anyone want to put a hold on Debt Service? Enterprise Funds, 10.1% of Article 4, Items 85 through 89. Total recommended for Enterprise Funds is $1,792,122. Any holds under Enterprise Funds? So I have no holds. Is there any discussion on the motion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor of that motion that I read, please press 1. Opposed, press 2. The voting period is open.[1148.08][1148.08](pause) Oh, and abstain, press 3.[1150.83][1150.83](pause) What is 360 in favor, 6 opposed with 9 abstentions? So the motion is approved. And we've now completed Article 4, so the reconsideration rules will apply. Article 5 is the capital budget, and it's on Page 26 of the Finance Committee pamphlet. And Ann Harrison moves, and Sarah Melish seconds, that the town raise by taxation or otherwise to pay for the items listed, and appropriate the same as presented in the Recommended and Funding Source columns of Article 5, as presented in the warrant, with the following clarifications. Under Item 3, $200,000 from taxation and an additional $660,000 contingent upon passage of a Proposition 2.5 ballot question. Item 11, $300,000 from taxation and $500,000 from the fund balance. Item 21, $101,000 from the fund balance and $15,000 from the waterway fund, for a total of $1,784,875 from taxation, $1,556,000 from the fund balance, $200,000 from the sewer enterprise fund, $15,000 from the waterway fund, and furthermore, an additional sum of $660,000 for the purpose of funding the design and engineering of a new DPW facility, which appropriation shall be contingent upon the approval of a capital outlay expenditure exclusion ballot question in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). Are there any holds on any of the items under Article 5? Yes?[1274.65][1274.65](end of transcript) Number 5? And did I see another hand up? Yes, sir.[1285.58][1285.58](end of transcript)
11, 12, 13, and 20.
11, 12, 13, and 20. Okay, so we'll start with number 5.[1303.83][1303.83](end of transcript) Oh, sorry. Yes.[1315.33][1315.33](end of transcript) Ms. Melish.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This year, the Finance Committee created a 25-year capital facility plan to determine how to address our needs and spread the tax rate impact over multiple years. This plan is on Page 14 of the FinCom booklet. Article 5 includes $4.2 million for capital projects to be funded from reserves, taxation, a one-year cash debt exclusion, waterways fund, and sewer enterprise fund. It does not include new long-term debt. Please refer to Pages 26 and 8 in the FinCom booklet. Page 8 also lists $10.5 million in grants to help fund capital projects which are not included in this article. This year, we learned we will not receive a million-dollar grant from Coastal Zone Management for the rotunda, so we added $800,000 to this article, and CPC added $200,000. The federal government is clawing back grants, and we don't know the full impact. The $4.5 million brick grant, a state pass-through from the federal government awarded for the Central Street culvert, was not in the initial round of grants clawed back, but we are concerned. If it is clawed back, and we cannot find other state funding, we will need a special town meeting to approve long-term debt to cover the portion of the project which is expected to begin this fall. If other expected grants do not materialize, the impacted project will be reviewed and a determination made regarding whether to move forward as planned. Thank you.[1438.67][1438.67](end of transcript)
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Sarah. My apologies for skipping over you.[1444.13][1444.13](end of transcript) Okay, so we had a hold on Item 5. Ms. Bates.
Isabella Bates, 2 Masconomo Street. Can anybody explain what this is, this options study that's $100,000?
Mr. Fetterspiel.
So this is to analyze different options we could pursue in preserving Ocean Street as we know it today. We know that it suffers from winter storms typically, and that it has not undergone any major repairs. It's gone a lot of Band-Aids over the last decade or so. And this is an effort to come up with a more comprehensive plan for how to preserve the road potentially, or what are our options as we look forward? So the money is designed to hire a consulting engineering firm to help with identifying options and to present those options in public forums.
So the assumption here is that there would be continuity on that road? There would not be considering two entries but with not anything in the middle? I know that the overrun of the ocean comes in the middle of the U of Ocean Street, and I assume that that's where the concern is. Right? It's not up by Route 127. So I just wonder, does this assume that that continuity would continue? Is that part of the assumption in the study?
So the study will include that assumption. It may also look at alternatives, depending on what different permitting possibilities might exist. So it'll include a whole gamut of options to present.
That's a lot of money for a little road.[1569.47][1569.47](laughter)
So we had also holds on 11, 12, 13, and 20. I think one gentleman had all of those. Yes, sir.
I did. Rick Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. I'd also like to, before we start, thank you, Alan and Greg, for working with you guys over the years. I'm also a member of the Library Board of Trustees, so good pleasure working with all you guys.
Thank you.
So, number 11, I would just like some clarity. There's $800,000 here, and then $500,000 in CPC. So are we talking 800, 500, or 1.3? And I'd like a little clarity on what we get for whatever the sum is.
Mr. Fetterspiel.
So we're asking the voters to approve tonight a total of 1.3 million towards the rotunda restoration. So 800 in this current capital budget, and then another 500 in CPC funding, Community Preservation Programming. For, in addition, we are continuing to pursue some grant funding. We had hoped to, as Sarah mentioned, we had hoped to get a CZM grant as part of this effort for $1 million, but it does not look promising. CZM has about a fifth of their funding that they used to have, and they're targeting projects that directly protect people, housing primarily. But we are continuing to look at other grants, and we are hopeful for a Seaport Economic Council grant for $1 million. Total project costs are in the 2.3 million range to rebuild the rotunda in its current location but higher up, so about five feet higher. So the new pilings will be about five feet higher, and the whole structure, including the ramp, would be raised up, hopefully protecting it from future storms.
Mr. Rogers?
So I just feel like we spent a fair amount of money on the rotunda recently, right? So what kind of guarantee is there that this is going to hold over for the next generation?
I wish I could give you a guarantee. I can't give you that, but it is meeting and exceeding some of the projected standards. So we're following Army Corps and FEMA standards as we look towards raising that structure.
And if we don't get a grant, is there another $1 million that we're going to be asked to spend for this thing? Or is the project dead at that point?
Well, that'll be a determination to be made at a future town meeting. It's possible. If those grants do not materialize, that there'd be enough demand to make sure that that structure remains. So I could see that coming back before the voters.
And I'm sorry to belabor this, but I also seem to recall there was once a study about moving it to land. Has that been fully explored, or is it, are we currently just looking at keeping it above the water?
So yes, there were maybe four or five different options that were studied, and this one rose to the top, and the board, the Select Board, voted to pursue this particular
So I'm concerned about spending 1.3 million or 2.3 million when we already know that there's heavy infrastructure bills coming in the next decade. I love the rotunda. It's a beautiful thing, but there's a lot of beautiful things around town that need protection as well.[1795.32][1795.32](end of transcript) I'm struggling with trying to- I'm struggling with trying to come, coming up with a motion that can keep the project alive without having to commit 1.3 million dollars tonight. Not sure, not sensing a lot of a sport in the room, so I will let that one go. All right. If you want to make a motion, I'd be, I'm open to ideas. I don't know what the possibilities are here. All right, then I guess I'll go on to number 12. Same sort of thing here, Singing Beach Bathhouse Plumbing, and then on CPC, there is Singing Beach Bathhouse Upgrades. One was for 50,000 and not passed forward, and one is for 50,000 that is passed forward. Are they the same thing, or are they two different projects?
Mr. Fetterspiel. So, under Article Five, the proposal is no money for this project, and instead, the funding would come from the Community Preservation Fund.
But it is just for plumbing, so they need the plumbing work, it's just how it's being paid for?
So, there's, there's no funding proposed in Article Five, but there is the funding in Article, whatever it is.
Article 15, number two. So, I'm just wondering if that number two is for plumbing, or if it was for a different project, and they still need plumbing work?
No, it's for the plumbing.
It is? Okay, great. Number 13 of Article Five, the COA Senior Center, 50,000 from, for fun, from fund balance. I'd just be curious what, we, we voted to spend a fair amount of money to buy the building or subdivide the building or whatever it is. What is this next 50,000 for?
Proceed?
Yes.
Okay. So, the 50,000 would help fund a design effort and further cost estimate, eight, cost estimations to be made on the renovation and expansion for the town portion. So, the, the goal is to fundraise those dollars to do that renovation and expansion, but you need, you need some design work, and you need some nice pictures to show people what they're potentially fun, donating their money towards. So, this is, this is an effort to jumpstart that fundraising initiative so that we have a solid project to present to potential funders.
Terrific.
Last year, you had one on number 20.
Number 20, yes. Shellfish study, and as much as I would love to know more about clams and mussels, I'm just kind of curious why we need to spend 15,000 learning more about them.
Mr. Fetterspiel.
So, I might turn to Bayon for this, but in, in, in short order, it's to recreate, or reestablish shellfish beds in and around the harbor so that you could harvest shellfish again. And so, there's a process by which you have to go through to get permit, or get it, yeah, permitted through the state so that it is deemed safe and that indeed the shellfish are edible that you're harvesting. So, Bayon, you want to add to that?
Mr. Pike, this is Harbor Master Bayon Pike.
Moderator, thank you. So, it is essentially what Mr. Fetterspiel said. The shellfish beds here have been for a very long time. Shellfish warden is very active in trying to get shellfish beds reopened, so residents could at first probably seasonally go out and harvest their own shellfish. Most waterfront communities have a shellfish warden. We're lucky to have one who's pushing to try to reestablish the opening of the beds for the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Mr. Rogers?
Time and answering the questions.
Is there further discussion under Article Five? Yes?
Brenda Furlong, 19 Ocean Street.
I think we need the mic turned up a bit.
How do you do that? Testing?
I've recognized Brenda Furlong.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'd like to comment on item number five on this article. It's Brenda Furlong, 19 Ocean Street. In 2007, there was a survey done by the Commonwealth of all the shoreline protection, abutments, revertments, et cetera. The ones on Black and White Beach within the state were given failing grades, Fs and Ds. That was 17 years ago, and virtually nothing has been done subsequently. Indeed, in a recent communication, in a grant application, a town official said, and I quote, "There is a current public safety hazard as the crossing is not suitable for providing emergency access egress to residents." That was in October of 2023. Since that time, there have been three applications made for grants, various amounts, various different agencies. All three have been denied. This road is not just for the residents of the, of the neighborhood. This is a, this is a town treasure. This road is the only public road that goes by the ocean. It is used by bikers, joggers, families with small children, people walking their dog, and indeed, we see multiple cars there during the day with people having a cup of coffee and enjoying the scenery, answering their emails, reading the newspaper, and just enjoying a platonic moment of serenity. I urge you, after all of this time and all of these attempts, to approve this $100,000. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Furlong. Yes, the lady in the back. I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. I'd like to go back to 13.
Could you, could you give us your, could you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, yes. Margaret, AKA Peggy Coleman, of 20 Friends Street. My issue is, again, with the Council on Aging. At the last annual meeting, we almost unanimously supported a million-dollar purchase for the Council on Aging, and I don't see why we have to ask for 200,000 more because I don't know what happened to that million dollars. So, if you could explain to me what the status is of the million dollars that we awarded to the town, or the town awarded to the Council on Aging, that would be very helpful in determining whether we need to ask for 200,000 more.
Mr. Fetterspiel.
So, the, the request is 50,000, not 200, so the original number was 200, but it was reduced to 50,000. So, the million dollars that was approved last year, that is going towards the purchase of the, of the property. And I'm pleased to say that the, that the board and the Masons have come to terms and have a purchase and sale agreement, and we will be moving forward in the next, hopefully, 60 days on, on closing on that property. So, that's what the million dollars is for, the actual purchase. And so, the additional funds here, as I mentioned, will go towards advancing the design for the renovation and for the expansion, and that'll be used then for the fundraising to raise the dollars needed privately to, to do those renovations and expansion.
I, I hope that someone who hears better understands what was been explained, and that we are not going to wait as long as a library is having to wait for their bathroom. So, I hope that we don't need 200,000 more, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Rogers.
Hi, Sandra Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. I would like to pull 11 from the article to be voted on separately, given that we're talking about going back for another million after this year and going for prop overrides, that maybe we should be considering relooking at this plan, looking at fundraising, et cetera. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Rogers, are you proposing to change that amount?
I don't know if we can vote on one of the items separately to hear from everybody. If not, then yes, I would propose to negate it out and push it to another determined time.
Okay, so your motion is, is to reduce item 11 to zero, your amendment?
Right. If, if it's not able to be voted and pulled out separately.
Well, I, I think, I think the way to do that is to, is to consider your amendment and vote on that separately. So, is, is, Ms. Rogers has moved to reduce item 11 to zero. Is that seconded? Yes? Seconded. Yes. So, while we're, while we're preparing a slide for Ms. Rogers' amendment, is there any further discussion under Article Five? Mr. Gilbert.
Is this on? Oh, yeah. Gary Gilbert, 11 Magnolia Ave. I, the town has seen roads get washed out, and then they go repair them, and they get washed out and they repair them. And I just support any efforts to really just bite the bullet, spend more money, and really fix the rotunda, really fix maybe Ocean Street with a comprehensive study. In general, this is, sea level rise is not going away, and piecemeal repairs is costing us, I haven't added it up, but I'm sure, a lot of money, so I support going forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Reduce it to zero. Yes. Could you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Marlene Dolan, 19 Woodcrest Road. Although the rotunda is something that seems like a cosmetic fix, we have, I have read many articles and letters to the editor in the Cricket about people's love for that place and the use of it for the proms, and not moving it onto land, and Cindy Lu Hu, who is the mayor of Tux Point, who loves it too, and hopefully, when our new signage comes out, the rotunda actually is the, what you're going to see on the new signage for Manchester by the Sea. So, I vote to keep the rotunda in as idiotic and unnecessary as it is.
Thank you. Okay. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? So, Ms. Rogers' amendment is to reduce item 11 from, yes, sir.
Good evening. Sorry to be so late to the microphone. I have one more comment.
Your name and address, sir.
I'm sorry. It's Thomas Frank, 195 Summer Street. And perhaps I'm just dovetailing on what an earlier speaker said, but, you know, we have some questions about forthcoming federal funding or not. I know that we were talking about PFAS radiation, and I think the earlier point, and certainly my point, is that perhaps we should take a closer look at expenses such as this, given that we have some really significant items on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Bowlin.
So, I understand there are, there are some people who are maybe reluctant to spend money on Tux Point, not on the rotunda. We certainly spent a significant amount on it over the years, all because of storm damage, which we know is going to happen again. Although it's not critical infrastructure, it is nonetheless a major symbol of this town. We have it present in any number of marketing historical materials. It's used for weddings. It's central location for a lot of people to, to use and enjoy during the summer. It is a landmark, and we should protect our landmarks, especially ones that have as strong a symbolic value as the rotunda at Tux Point. A lot of people know about that rotunda. They know about it across the, kind of, the country, and they come from far and wide to, to be there. I think we need to hold the line, and although it's expensive, hang on to it, because if we give it up, it's gone, period. We're not going to get it back.
Thank you, Mr. Bowlin. Okay, I hope we're ready to vote on Ms. Rogers' amendment, which is to reduce item 11 from 800,000 to zero. Yes. So, if you're in favor of that, press one. Opposed, press two. Obstained, press three. And the vote is 59 in favor, 321 opposed, with 14 abstentions. And now, we'll vote on the main motion, which includes the original amount of 800,000 for item 11. If you're in favor of the original motion, press one. Opposed, two. Obstained, press three. There's 375 in favor, 22 opposed, with five abstentions. That concludes Article Five. Article Six is the appropriation for the school committee. I hope everybody has the, the handout with the three school committee motions on it. Christopher Reed, the Chair of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee, makes motion number one on the school handout, and Ann Harrison seconds. This motion simply reaffirms the formula in the existing regional school agreement. State law requires that we do that every year. It doesn't change the allocation. Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press one. Opposed, press two. Obstained, press three. Voting is open. And the vote is 383 in favor, none, nine opposed, nine opposed, and five abstentions, so that motion is approved. And Chris Reed makes motion number two on the handout, and Ann Harrison, Harrison seconds that. This is the operating budget motion for the school committee, for the schools, and I'll recognize Chris Reed for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to the Select Board and Finance Committee for your continued support and collaboration. And a sincere thank you to all Manchester residents for your ongoing commitment to our schools. The Manchester Essex Regional School District remains a place where students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally, and we're proud of our standing as one of the top-performing public school districts in the state and nation, as reflected in recent rankings by Boston Magazine and US News World Report. Yet, we are at a critical crossroads. The FY '26 proposed budget represents a 7.83% increase over last year, totaling $32.6 million. This increase reflects rising fixed costs, particularly of note, a 22.95% jump in our healthcare premiums, the effects of the previous years of inflation, and the evolving needs of our students. While this budget is essential, it is not a correction for the long-term challenge of fully funding our operating budget without the continued use of reserve funds, which has jumped significantly this year. Over the past five years, we've made difficult decisions to right-size the district, cutting expenses, reallocating resources, restructuring departments, reducing staff, and using reserves to balance the budget. However, those reserves are nearly depleted, and relying on them is no longer sustainable. This budget reflects our commitment to maintain This budget reflects our commitment to maintaining and enhancing the quality of education while acknowledging financial constraints of both of our towns. We're focused on preserving essential services and supporting curriculum development, special education, professional development teachers, while also allowing us to continue planning for things like the reintroduction of library services and world languages at the elementary level, both core components of a well-rounded education. I'm also pleased to report that the Essex Elementary School has been approved for the feasibility phase by MSBA, with a study underway to assess the building's condition and determine the best design. The project's on track for a community vote on funding in late 2026 or early 2027, with construction expected to begin in 2027 and conclude in 2031. As a school committee, we will continue working towards a stable financial structure, but we cannot do this alone. We rely on the support of both of our towns, and it's crucial that we make decisions together to ensure the long-term success of our schools and students for both of our communities' benefit. In closing, the school committee and the Manchester Essex School Community are deeply grateful for your continued support of our district and our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. And I'll recognize Sarah Melish.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends the school district budget, an increase in Manchester's assessment of a little over $1.1 million, or 6.96%. We have worked with the school district, school board, and Town of Essex for the past year, and feel this budget increase is necessary to maintain current educational programs. The large increase is primarily due to health insurance increases and the nature of the teacher-negotiated contracts containing COLA and STEP increases, which is consistent throughout the state. We are pleased that we can include this increase in our tax rate without requiring a proposition two-and-a-half override. For several years since COVID, we have increased taxes less than 2.5% per year, creating excess levy capacity available for use in later years without an override. However, Essex requires an override vote for its assessment. In case it fails, the school district has created a contingency plan, reducing the budget by about $2 million. The Finance Committee does not support the contingency plan. Since the district has made significant annual reductions over the past three years, it will destroy current educational programs, and we feel our residents deserve more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Lindsey Banks, I'm at 44th Street. So since engaging with this school budget advocacy, I've had the pleasure of interacting with many different groups of people of all ages in our town, and this has given me a much greater appreciation of what an increasing town and school budget means for people at all different stages of life. And often, in these conversations, and in this day and age, we see seniors pitted against children or vice versa, and I don't think it has to be like that, and it doesn't have to be like that here. I want children to have what they need, and I want seniors to be able to live and thrive in this town. I want that senior center project underway, and yet we do not have unlimited resources. As we've just heard, our Finance Committee manages our town finances very responsibly and keeps the tax rate reasonable, balancing the needs of our landmark rotunda and the plumbing at Singing Beach, very, very necessary. We are fortunate that our Select Board and Finance Committee recognize that making sure we have excellent schools is in all of our financial interests. In fact, economists estimate that within suburban neighborhoods, a 5% improvement in a school's test scores can raise home prices by 2.5%. For MERSD to be ranked at number three in the state, above Wellesley, Acton Boxborough, and Lexington, at such a reasonable tax rate really feels like a win. I thank the volunteers on our town boards who have managed our town so well, to keep the tax rate so reasonable, and pay for our excellent schools, and make all the other amenities we enjoy possible. I also trust that they are working hard to find a way forward for our senior center. I did and will vote in favor of getting that built for our community. But for right now, given the cuts to the schools that are on the table, 10 teachers, half-days every Wednesday for elementary school students, picture downtown every Wednesday after lunch, instructional coaches, special education supports, et cetera, it feels like the investments that we have made in our excellent schools are at risk, which also puts our home values, our vibrant town, and our children and families at risk. If you isolate the school budget from the town budget, the increase in taxes for a median value home, median value home roughly, is about $16 a month. To me, a continued investment in our schools and our community at this time appears to be very worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Banks. Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor of Mr. Reed's motion, please press 1; opposed, 2; abstain, press 3. Voting is open. There's 399 in favor. 25 opposed, and 5 abstentions. And Chris Reed makes motion number three on the handout, and Ann Harrison seconds. Is there any discussion on motion number three? This is for the schools' long-term and short-term debt. Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1; opposed, press 2; abstain, press 3. The vote is 403 in favor, 12 opposed, with 5 abstentions, so the motion is approved. Article VII. Article VII is an amendment to the town zoning bylaw, and Sarah Creighton moves, and Gordon Brewster seconds the article, is presented in the warrant with one change, which is in section 10.2, number 6, on page 30 of the Finance Committee pamphlet. In the second paragraph, delete, quote, "or flood boundary and floodway map," parentheses, "choose map which delineates floodways for your community," close quote. So that's essentially making a choice as to which map we'll use. Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 5, provides that no zoning amendment shall be adopted unless the Planning Board has held a public hearing on it and the Planning Board has submitted a report with recommendations to town meeting. The Planning Board held a hearing on this and all the other zoning amendments proposed in this warrant on April 7, 2025, and it has submitted its report on each one. And this is a 2/3 vote pursuant to Chapter 40A, Section 5. Remarks, Ms. Creighton?
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tonight, the Planning Board is presenting articles that ensure residents can qualify for flood insurance, that regulate accessory dwelling units, expand projects requiring public input, and ensure that applications can be acted on when one or more Planning Board members may be unavailable. The Planning Board recommends Articles 7 through 13. Article 7 replaces our existing floodplain bylaw with a model bylaw required by the state. The state requires that we have the exact provisions in the model bylaw for homeowners in flood-prone areas to qualify for flood insurance. Most importantly, the new floodplain regulations use updated maps to identify flood-prone areas. The maps were developed by FEMA and are referenced in the bylaw with a future date of July 2025, which is a little confusing, but is at the state's direction. The maps are available on the Planning Board's website, as well as FEMA's website. The new bylaw details town oversight for work in any of the designated flood areas, requires hydrologic analyses for work in those areas, and requires protection of these areas from things such as the storage of hazardous materials, construction that would worsen flooding, and any destruction of dunes. The Planning Board recommends Article 7.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? As I said, this is a 2/3 vote. If you're in favor, yes, sir.
Dean Nahadis, 48 Beach Street, I have a discussion on this.
Go ahead.
I was wondering why we're not just referencing the state regulation. That way, we wouldn't have to update it every time the state updates it. And is there any additional language that's more restrictive from the state language in here?
Ms. Creighton?
We did ask the state if we could just reference the regulations, so we didn't have to update them every time. We wanted to do that, and we were advised that this is the way to go.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? This is a 2/3 vote. If you're in favor, press 1; opposed, press 2; abstain, press 3. The vote is 330 in favor, 11 opposed, and 18 abstentions. Article 8. Article 8 pertains to standard accessory dwelling units, and Sue Philbrook moves the article is presented in the warrant with one change, on page 36 of the Finance Committee pamphlet, in section 9.1.2.1, number 7, delete, quote, "all additions to," unquote, so that number 7 would read, "Standard accessory dwelling units shall comply with lot-coverage requirements, primary building setbacks, and dimensional requirements of section 5.4 of these zoning bylaws." And Gordon Brewster seconds the motion. Now, this is an unusual zoning amendment in that it requires only a majority vote pursuant to Chapter 40A, Section 5, as amended by the Affordable Homes Act, Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024. Remarks, Sue Philbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am here to talk about Article 8, which is all about housing in Manchester, specifically ADUs or accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units are homes. They are a place to live that, as they are titled, they are accessory to a primary home. Examples in Manchester include a carriage house, a tiny house, an apartment in your garage, could be an apartment in your basement or in your attic. ADUs can fill a void in available housing in Manchester, for an elderly parent, for example, a caregiver, or for young adults seeking a rental home in Manchester to become a part of our community. Since February, the state requires that every city and town across the state allow ADUs on any lot where single-family housing is permitted. In Manchester, that's the entire town, except for the limited commercial district on the other side of 128. These ADUs must be 900 square feet or smaller, depending on the size of the primary home. In Article 8, we call these standard ADUs. These ADUs must be allowed as of right, without a special permit. So what does Article 8 do? Two things. Number one, it fixes our current zoning bylaw by replacing the outdated and unenforceable language regarding ADUs, and it replaces those with provisions that conform to the new state law. Number two, and most important, it adds rules and guardrails so that Manchester can maintain the local control over these ADUs that the state will allow. These local controls are listed in Article 8 on pages 36 and 37 of your warrant. They include restrictions like no to short-term rentals, and yes to permanent foundations, and to single ownership, no split of ownership between the accessory dwelling unit and the primary home. The Planning Board and the Select Board recommend that we pass Article 8. Article 8 will help ensure that these required ADUs remain accessory to their primary homes and compatible with Manchester's own permanent housing goals for our community. If Article 8 does not pass, these ADUs are still allowed. They will still be allowed to be constructed across Manchester, but none of the rules and restrictions listed on pages 36 and 37 will exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Philbrook. Is there discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Martha Farmer, 12 Bridge Street, Manchester. One element of this is the term, that is, the standard accessory dwelling units shall not be leased for a period of less than six months. Now, within the state, the short-term rental is 31 days. We are preparing to launch an accessory dwelling unit with the idea that we would have caregivers, potentially, and we would greatly prefer to have a shorter term than six months, because you don't know that you want somebody there that long. And I don't know why it has to be, a seasonal rental of three months doesn't seem unreasonable, and this eliminates that possibility. I'd like to understand why you chose to limit the term to six months or more.
Ms. Philbrook?
The reason we chose a period of six months is because in Manchester, we wanted to preserve the fact that it is a permanent residence as much as possible. We held many public hearings, and we heard many residents would prefer not to allow rental at all. We can't do that, but we thought six months was a reasonable period of time. It allows the ADU to be part of a neighborhood without continuous churning of the people who are occupying the ADU. And it really is in consideration of Manchester's goals for housing rather than rental opportunities, although obviously, we're allowing rentals. We thought it was a good compromise at six months.
Could I ask-
Thank you, Ms. Philbrook.
Does this mean that currently, homes that rent their ADUs for the season will no longer be able to do that, because there are many of those?
Ms. Philbrook? Ms. Creighton?
These regulations apply to new ADUs, so any existing ADUs that exist today with special permits or predating the ADU regulations, any of those don't have any of these regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. Do you have another question?
Is it feasible to propose an amendment to reduce that term to three months?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
I would propose such an amendment, to reduce the term from greater than six months to three months or longer. 13 weeks is a standard rental agreement with agencies that provide visiting nurses.
I think I heard a second. So you're, I just want to be sure I have this correctly. You would substitute for-
In line- In line 9.1.2.2, I guess.
Number two.
Yep.
Would substitute for three months, not less than...for six months.
So not be leased for a period of less than three months?
Right.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And that was seconded?
Seconded by Isabella Bates.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes?
Alida Bryant, 57 Old Essex Road. Just a point of information, would these limitations be moot if there was no contract? So if there is a caregiver in the place and they are living there as part of the employment contract, would this rental agreement even apply?
Ms. Creighton or Ms. Filbrick?
I think the Planning Board's not the enforcement agent, so it would be up to... Building Inspector is the enforcement agent, so it would be up to the Building Inspector to figure out how to enforce that, so.
Can you give us a guess? Okay. Yes, sir. Yes. No, I was recognizing this gentleman.
John Carlson, 9 Walker Road, Article on page 36, Item Number 8. I am concerned because my daughter works for an ADU company, so I was curious on the language, "Units shall be constructed on a permanent foundation." There are many ADUs made that are not on permanent, that are built off-site and transported and can be lifted on a crane onto a foundation if needed. They are not constructed, quote-unquote, "on-site," and I think...I'm curious about that language, whether or not it actually has to be new construction per this regulation or can be actually constructed off-site, prefabricated, bought in, and moved onto a foundation. And the other point is, you use the term "mobile home." Mobile home is no longer a legally accepted term in the state of Massachusetts. If you look at state regulations, mobile home is no longer a part of the language, and it has been replaced with manufactured home. Thank you.
Ms. Filbrick or Ms. Creighton?
Well, I think a building that is modular, built off-site, and is placed on a foundation that's part of the construction process, so the point was, we wanted it on...we heard from folks that if it was accessory, it should have a foundation when it was done and received an occupancy permit. As for the language of manufactured home, I would defer to counsel if we should change that. That's certainly fine.
Ms. Randazzo.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. News to me, but I quickly Googled, and it does appear that certain statutes now say manufactured homes. I think you could propose to say mobile or manufactured homes. Cover all the bases.
Yes. So... I think the Planning Board is willing to respond to that by changing the main motion to reflect in Number 8, "Mobile homes or manufactured homes." Is that your...okay. So we won't need to vote on that. That'll be part of the main motion. Mr. White.
Yeah, Nick White, 9 Spire Hill. I'd simply like to propose that we take out the words "mobile" or "manufactured" and simply require that the structures be installed on a permanent foundation.
So you're proposing to change "constructed"?
Remove the term "mobile homes" completely and reword Item 8 to say "installed on a permanent foundation" instead of "constructed."
Okay. Is that seconded? It's seconded. Okay, so let me make sure I have that right. You would substitute the word "installed" for the word "constructed on a permanent foundation," and you would delete manufactured homes or mobile homes. I know. Okay, so we now have two amendments pending, and under our rules, we can only have two amendments pending at one time. So is there further discussion of the main motion or of either of these two amendments? Yes, Ms. Filbrick.
On the mobile home, manufactured home change, I think if we take both terms out, then mobile homes would be allowed if it was installed on a permanent foundation. That was not the intent of residents who attended the hearings or the intent of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Ms. Filbrick. Yes, sir. In the back. Oh, sorry, ma'am, in the back. No.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Natasha Lamb, 39 Forest Street. I'm just wondering about the purpose of this. It seems to me like it's limiting the financial flexibility of people that want to do things with their property. I know, you know, my mother lives in Marblehead. She's moving into retirement. She's renting the first floor of her house, you know, like...I just...I don't quite get why we're doing this.
Ms. Filbrick.
The purpose of the state law and the purpose of the Planning Board is to have additional housing, and additional housing that will become part of our community in a more permanent fashion. And that's the purpose of the restrictions that we propose.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes. No, I'm recognizing the gentleman in the white shirt. Who was behind you? Sorry.
Thank you. Jack Ryan, 40 School Street. I had a question regarding the prohibition from separating from title the accessory dwelling units for both the standard and the large accessory dwelling unit. Why was that done? Is that so you couldn't condominiumize your house and the accessory dwelling unit?
Ms. Filbrick.
Yes.
I would recommend that that be stricken. As seniors, it would be advantageous economically to be able to sell one of the units to help you in retirement and live in the other unit without having to rent out and be the landlord... excuse me, and be the landlord. So I would request that it's the last...I think it's...I don't have my booklet with me. It's the last paragraph in each, the standard unit and the larger unit. The prohibition is in both of them, and I would request that the motion would be to amend and strike that paragraph in each one.
Well, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we already have two...
I know, you already have two, so we'll have to deal with one, but...
But I'll just tell you now that I would rule that outside the scope of the warrant because the two provisions you're talking about that prohibit separation of the lots are consistent with the definition of accessory, both in our town bylaw and under state law.
Okay. Thank you.
And therefore, the voters haven't been adequately warned that they might be separated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir. In the darks. This time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Brian Fry, and I live at 1 Harrington Way. I'm here to strongly support Articles 8 and 9, which are a good first step to modernize our zoning to allow accessory dwelling units.
We're just on 8 now. We're not going to discuss them together.
I realize that. I just didn't want to take up anybody else's time.
Appreciate that.
These articles create real opportunities for multi-generational living for parents, grandparents, and young adults to stay here in Manchester. I have friends who would love to keep their families together in town, but right now, that's just becoming harder and harder. ADUs are a practical, thoughtful solution that respects our town's character while making it more possible for families to live, stay, and thrive here. These articles are in line with our town's master plan, and I hope you'll join me in supporting them here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Rogers. I'm sorry, Ms. Bodmer Turner. Pardon me.
I'm Sandy Bodmer Turner. I live at 89 School Street, and I wanted to speak in support of these changes because they make it simpler for families like mine to make alterations to their homes to accommodate changing family needs. We have friends who would like to remain in place as they age, and ADU would allow them to have a separate space in their home for a caregiver. A new baby arrives in a young family, and ADU can make a space for an au pair, and even better, for grandparents. A family's financial situation changes, as the gentleman just says. An ADU would make it possible to have a separate space that would create a new income stream. So all these opportunities are good, but I also want to say how much I appreciate the Planning Board putting guardrails in place to assure that changes I might like in my one property don't deprive my neighbors of the enjoyment of theirs. Specifically, the size of what's allowed is limited to, at most, 900 feet. Setbacks from property lines, lot coverage ratios, building height restrictions, all remain the same. Nothing changes. Access is allowed only through an existing, underline "existing," driveway. Given these requirements and more, this article, I think, offers a reasonable new opportunity to owners of single-family homes in town. I urge you to join me in voting yes for Article 8.
Thank you, Ms. Bodmer Turner. Mr. Keogh.
I've got a big voice, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I respectfully move the question on Article 8.
Is that seconded? That's the motion to cut off debate? Yeah. We have a slide for that.
Six or three months?
Are we going to do motion, end of debate, Article 1?
I don't know. Okay, so the motion for the previous question is the motion to cut off debate. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstain, press 3. And the vote is 283 in favor, 16 opposed, and zero abstentions. So we have cut off debate. So we'll vote first on Mr. White's amendment, and that is in Section 9.1.2, Number 8, to substitute the word for "installed" for "constructed" on a permanent foundation, and to delete the words "manufactured" or "mobile home," "manufactured homes" or "mobile homes." That was the language that the Planning Board accepted as a friendly amendment. So this is a majority vote on that amendment. Everybody understand what we're voting on? Say it again. Okay. Mr. White has proposed two changes. One is in 9.1.2, Number 8. He would substitute the word "installed" for "constructed," so it would read "installed on a permanent foundation." And then he would delete from the phrase after that "manufactured homes" or "mobile homes." So the language as it currently is written would not allow manufactured homes and mobile homes. Mr. White's amendment would allow them. Yes.
I could be wrong, but I thought we really needed the word "mobile homes" in there to make sure that they were not put "installed on a permanent foundation."
That was the effect of the Planning Board's agreeing to that amendment. That would put it in. Mr. White's amendment would take both those phrases out. Both manufactured homes and mobile homes would be deleted.
Okay, so I have to...and you're doing this on one amendment?
That's the way he proposed it.
Okay. Thank you.
Everybody understand what we're voting on now? Ms. Bates.
If I understand it, if we vote yes on this, we are eliminating manufactured or mobile homes from this thing. If we vote no, the change will not go through. Is that correct?
The language as currently proposed by the Planning Board
Right.
would not allow manufactured homes or mobile homes. They might...it says, "They may not be temporary structures such as camping trailers, recreational vehicles, manufactured homes, or mobile homes." Those are not allowed under the Planning Board's language. If we vote yes on Mr. White's amendment, that would strike them, and therefore, they would be allowed.
Is that clear?
Yeah.
Mr. White. Would you go to the mic, please?
I'm not intending that we permit temporary structures.
I'm not intending that we permit temporary structures. I'm merely intending that we allow a prefabricated building to be installed on a permanent foundation.
Well, that's not what your amendment said.
Do you have to amend your amendment?
I'm open to a change in wording, but I'm suggesting that it would read, "All additions or structures containing a standard accessory dwelling unit shall be installed on a permanent foundation, and there may not be temporary structures such as camping trailers, recreational vehicles, or other temporary structures." I think that's clear.
Well, I think the effect of deleting mobile homes and manufactured homes is not clear, because then they would be allowed.
No, they are temporary structures.
Then why take them out?
It's just been suggested--
You're not recognized, sir.
It has just been suggested that we keep the word "mobile," but don't have the word "manufactured," regardless of what the state is using. That would maybe satisfy the objection to my amendment.
So you're suggesting changing your proposed amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
So, what your proposed amendment would do would be to revert to the original Planning Board language--
Except for the word "constructed" being replaced by "installed."
Yes, I understand that, but on the second point, all right. Does everybody understand this, because I am having trouble? All right.
If you like, I will just read it one more time, as I think we all agree now. "All additions or structures containing a standard accessory dwelling unit shall be installed on a permanent foundation, and there may not be temporary structures such as camping trailers, recreational vehicles, mobile homes, or other temporary structures."
Is that seconded?
Second.
Thank you. So, will the Planning Board, which earlier accepted manufactured homes, agree to delete it and go back to the original language?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you, Nick. All right, so, Mr. White's amendment, as finally submitted, is to the language which he just read, which would substitute the word "installed" in what you have in front of you for "constructed," and that's all it would do. Everybody clear on that?
Yes.
If you're in favor of that, please press 1. Opposed, press 2. Abstaining, press 3. And the vote is 252 in favor, 38 opposed, and 13 against. Now, before we go on to Ms. Farmer's proposed amendment to reduce the minimum rental time, I had a request from Gary Gilbert previously to propose an amendment on that subject. Notwithstanding the fact that we've cut off debate, I told him that I would give him an opportunity to make that amendment, so I'm going to stick with that. Mr. Gilbert?
Gary Gilbert, 11 Magnolia Ave. Thanks, Alan, for being the moderator for so many years. Yeah, I was gonna, wondered if you wanted to piggyback my motion, which is to change the time period to one month, not three months. Maybe they could, it could merge with the other motion, I'm not sure, but I have reasons for this I'd like to articulate.
Are you going to make that amendment, because you have an opportunity--
I would love to. I'd move to amend Section 9.1.2.2, the use requirements for standard accessory dwelling units, to change subsection 9.1.2.2 to read that standard accessory dwelling units shall not be leased for a period of less than one month.
Is that seconded?
Second.
Okay, seconded. Remarks, Mr. Gilbert?
First off, I have no intention of having an ADU. But no one rents an apartment for six months. I've rented apartments for 35 years or so, and they, they'll run, this forces them to rent it for a year only. And I've been at public meetings where some people said that they wanted to have a shorter time period, even though slightly contrary to what Ms. Philbrick was saying. This excludes summer rentals and the freedom to rent briefly. Some people don't want tenants all year round in their place, they don't want to be forced to have them there for three months or six months at a time. They might want to just rent it for a couple of months. A lot of people do summer rentals and then a winter rental, nine months and three months, or whatever you want to call it. Others may want their family there in the summer and then rent during the winter. Some may want summer rentals, but only that could be two months long, or three or four months long, everybody's definition of summer may be different. And the people who are renting these things, they need the income or want the income, but perhaps don't want pesty people around for too long. I think you should let people decide what they want to do with their own homes. People do, will go through a lot of time and expense to build an ADU. The vast majority of people in this town won't have one. The ones that have them, who knows how long they'll rent them for, probably a lot of just summer rentals. There's certainly a need for year-round rentals, I agree. And the town doesn't build these ADUs, we will be doing it in our own homes. We should have the right and the freedom to use them as we wish. The one-month time period also is a coincidence with the state law, they talk about these things shouldn't be limited, actually, there's language here, "No municipality shall unreasonably restrict rental of an ADU that is not a short-term rental." So, it seems to me they don't want you to restrict them anything, any time period longer than short-term, and in our town, we define short-term as one week, but we're talking a month, so people should feel safe with that.
Mr. Gilbert, you're over two minutes.
Am I? Okay. So, I don't see any public benefit to this, and I'll stop right there.
Thank you. Okay, so we now have two amendments pending. One is Mr. Gilbert's, to reduce the time period, the minimum time period for rentals to one month, and the other is Ms. Farmer's amendment to reduce it to three months. Yes, sir?
Fred Rossi, 17 Highwood Road. There is a tremendous public benefit to this. The whole point of this is to create housing, not opportunities for us just to make some money on our property. To create housing for people to live, not for 30 days, not for 45 days, to live. You can't live in someplace if you're moving every 30 days. We're not here to increase our pocketbooks, we're here to cement our community, to develop and to increase our community so that it is vibrant going forward. Again, this is not about making money, it's about having people be able to either come into this town or stay in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Yes, sir?
Thomas Frank, 195 Summer Street, and I can't compete with the elegance, eloquence of the previous speaker, but I would like to remind the group, as the purpose of this Section 9.1, to facilitate the availability of suitable private housing for moderate and lower-income elderly and younger citizens of the town while preserving the character of existing districts. This doesn't interfere with one's ability to rent their own home, it simply is trying to serve one particular constituency while not allowing a construction of rental properties in one's backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir? Yes, ma'am? Sorry. Mrs. Dixon?
Wendy Dixon, 295 Summer Street. I agree with the gentleman from back there, and we're all going to vote, so we don't all need to say what we agree with, but really, the hand-wringing and heart-sadness of not being able to have the next generation live here, the disappointment of knowing that teachers and firepeople and, and other people that serve the town can't afford to live here, and it does distress me somewhat, though I understand the financial incentive to build something 900 square feet, you could rent it out in the summertime, it'd be great. I do think that being able to have a shorter term as a medical caregiver is a nice way to limit and create an opening for that, but other than that, it, it feels like it should be with a mindset of permanent housing, and if you want to have rental income, vacation center, you know, people coming in and renting for the summer, we can always rent our homes. We used to do that because we weren't here in the summertime. You can rent the main home out if you want to make money, but the point of the ADU is to create an opportunity that is affordable for people who work in the town or are children who are now adults to live here. So it's sacrificial, it's sort of getting on board in a way that's architecturally pleasing and synchronous with our hopes for the town in terms of its beauty and open space, and it's taking larger homes and saying, you know, what if we could just rework the inside of this? No one driving by would even know that there was another permanent person living there. But there are, that's a way to increase housing without having a lot of density issues going on. So I, I would urge us to think about the incentives of why we're doing this and to be on board with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Further discussion? Okay, so we're going to vote first on Mr. Gilbert's amendment, which would be to reduce the minimum rental period for a standard ADU from six months to one month. Who is raising the point of order? Mr. Bobma Turner?
Jeff Bodma Turner, 89 School Street. I believe that the state requirements are 31 days, which is more precise than one month, and that that should be the language of this amendment that we're voting on.
I'm going to ask Town Council if that's correct. If Town Council is, is replying that that is the definition of short-term rentals for the state's purpose, it doesn't necessarily govern our bylaw. Further discussion? All right, so we'll vote first on Mr. Gilbert's amendment, which would reduce the minimum rental period from six months to one month. We ready? If you're in favor of that, press 1. Opposed, press 2. Vote is 79 in favor, 201 against, and 6 abstaining, so that amendment does not prevail. And we'll now, vote now on Ms. Farmer's amendment, which is to reduce the minimum rental period from six months to three months. Ready? Voting is open. Yes for one, or one for yes, two for no, and three to abstain. The vote is 138 in favor, 143 against, with three abstentions, so Ms. Farmer's amendment does not prevail. And we'll vote now on Ms. Philbrick's original motion with Mr. White's amended language in place, which would change, which changed, "All additions or structures containing a standard accessory dwelling unit shall be installed on a permanent foundation instead of constructed." And this is a majority vote, as I mentioned earlier, under the 2024 Amendments to the Zoning Enabling Act. If you're in--
This is the main motion?
This is the main motion, right. And the vote is 244 in favor, 26 against, with seven abstentions. Who gave me this note? Is this yours? Is this your note? Okay. All right, so we, we've disposed of Article 8. We'll now move on to Article 9. And Chris Olley moves the article as printed in the warrant with two changes. On page 38 of the Finance Committee pamphlet in Section 9.1.3, Number 7, delete all addition, all additions to, so that Number 7 would read, "Large accessory dwelling units shall comply with lot coverage requirements, primary building setbacks, and dimensional requirements of Section 5.4 of these zoning bylaws." And the other change is very similar to the one that we just approved under Mr. White's amendment, which is in 9.1.3, in Number 8, "All additions or structures containing a large accessory dwelling unit shall be construct, shall be installed on a permanent foundation." Everybody clear on that motion?
Yeah.
Okay. And Gordon Brewster seconds. Select Board recommends approval, and the Finance Committee takes no position. And this is a two-thirds vote pursuant to Chapter 40A, Section 5. Remarks, Chris Olley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is, Article 9 is about allowing larger ADUs, but it would require a special permit. One of the questions that some members of the Planning Board raised during discussions about ADUs was, why 900 square feet? That seemed pretty arbitrary. And we could think of circumstances where a larger ADU might be more reasonable or appropriate. For example, you might have a garage that you want to convert to an ID, ADU, but it has 950 square feet. Or maybe you want to subdivide your house physically to create an ADU, but the way the walls in your house line up, it might end up with an ADU of 1,000 square feet. Or, most importantly, maybe your, the proposed resident in the ADU might have some special needs or special family circumstances that would require more than 900 square feet. So we're proposing that these be allowed for up to 1,200 square feet. We discussed units as big as 2,000 square feet or 1,500 square feet, but in the end, we thought 1,200 square feet was a reasonable size limit for an ADU. But we don't think ADUs should be allowed by right of this size, and so they would require a special permit from the ZBA. This would require site plan review by the ZBA to ensure that certain design standards are met. It would have a public hearing, so neighbors could submit their opinions. And the ZBA-- And the ZBA could either deny or approve the special permit, or they could approve it with special conditions. We also propose that these larger ADUs meet all the same standards that a small ADU would, all the dimensional requirements. They would still not be allowed to be bigger than 50% of the primary residents, and there'd be all the same setbacks and prohibitions against short-term rentals and separation of ownership. But we also propose a few other additional limitations. First, they'd only be allowed in the A, B, C, and E zoning districts, because these districts are less dense, and the D and G districts allow two-family houses anyway. Second, they'd only be allowed on lots that have an existing single-family home on them. And third, for a standalone ADU structure, they would have to meet the same setbacks as a primary residence, not for an accessory building like a garage or a shed. And finally, the off-street parking would be what's required in our current zoning, so there'd be no special exceptions for parking. The Planning Board and the Select Board urge your approval on this, because this would provide much-needed housing in the town with the least, most minimal impact on the character of the residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olney. Is there discussion? I don't see any hands up, meeting ready to vote? This is a 2/3 vote under Chapter 40A, Section 5. If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, press 2. The vote is 215 in favor, 17 opposed, and 4 abstaining. That prevails by more than 2/3. Article 10. Sarah Creighton moves, and Sue Philbrick seconds, to pass over, take no action under Article 8, excuse me, under Article 10. And that's because we passed Article 8, and so we don't need under 10. Remarks, Ms. Creighton. Sarah, do you want to say anything? Okay. This is a majority vote to pass over. Is there discussion? If you're in favor of that, press 1. Opposed, press 2. Abstaining, press 3. 190 in favor, 3 opposed, with 9 abstentions. So motion to pass over prevails. Article 11 pertains to establishing two associate members on the Planning Board, and Gordon Brewster moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Chris Olney seconds. This is also a 2/3 vote. Remarks, Mr. Brewster.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good to have you back, Sarah.
Thank you.
So Article 11, we're proposing that we bring on two associate members in addition to the regular members that are already established on the Planning Board. The intent is pretty simple. In the event of absence by a regular member, or an inability to act, or a conflict of interest, or just a simple vacancy on the board, we would have the ability to continue to do our business with the associate members. I could speak to this directly, because I was brought on the board with a vacancy just nine months ago, so I understand completely what it is. The terms, terms are pretty simple. The Planning Board and the Select Board would go through an interview process, as did I, and the terms would be initially a one- and a two-year term, staggered, and then two years from there on forth. And this way, we have coverage throughout the whole time. The importance of this is that it provides flexibility for the Planning Board to continue our important business, particularly on evaluation of special permits where the vote is critical. Okay. Voting special permits requires, by the way, a 5 of the 7, seven members on the Planning Board. Five of the seven members have to vote to get approval. Unfortunately, if we don't get the votes for this, if we don't get the votes for this thing, it does jeopardize the ability of the Planning Board to act on critical items. So I urge you all to consider voting for it.
Thank you, Mr. Brewster. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstaining, 3. The vote is 196 in favor, 10 opposed, with 4 abstentions, and that prevails by more Article 12 relates to site plan review under the zoning bylaw, and Sarah Creighton moves the article as printed in the warrant. Sue Philbrick seconds. Select Board recommends approval, and the Finance Committee takes no position. And this is also a 2/3 vote. Remarks, Sarah Creighton.
Article 12 expands when the Planning Board can exercise site plan review. And site plan review is an important tool that provides opportunities for better input, a public hearing, and Planning Board input to a project. Today, site plan review applies to several types of uses, including multifamily housing or to any project that requires five or more parking spaces, as well as a couple other places within the bylaws, such as marijuana establishments. Article 12 expands this to a number of commercial uses, and some changes from commercial to residential use and from residential to commercial use. So we urge you to vote yes on Article 12.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. Is there discussion? I don't see any hands. Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstaining, press 3. The vote is 193 in favor, 10 opposed, with 3 abstentions, and that prevails by more than 2/3. Article 13. Peter Morton moves the article as printed in the warrant, and Gordon Brewster seconds. The Select Board recommends approval, and the Finance Committee takes no position. This is also a 2/3 vote. Remarks, Mr. Morton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 13 recommends eliminating the introduction to the zoning regulations and creating its own page on the website. Currently, page 1 of the introduction, titled Introduction, has outdated state law references. Examples include, number 2, "All zoning changes require approval by a 2/3 vote." That is not always the case, as some require less, as we've learned tonight. And number 8 currently reads, "A special permit shall lapse within two years," and that's no longer true either. The title of the page, Introduction, will likely be changed to something along the lines of "General Information About Zoning in Massachusetts," and will therefore become informational and not regulatory. By removing the introduction from the bylaws, they can be changed without zoning amendments, creating a much more efficient solution. Page 2 of the introduction, titled "Information Relating to Laws and Regulations Governing Land Use," will continue to follow page 1. Changes can be made to keep it current without the need for zoning amendments, allowing this section to be truly informational and not regulatory. The Planning Board recommends deleting the zoning introduction in the zoning bylaws and instead move it to its own location on the town website, and the Select Board recommends approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstaining, press 3. And the result is 202 in favor, 3 opposed, with 3 abstentions, and that prevails by more than 2/3. And we're done with zoning. Thank you to the Planning Board. Article 14. John Round moves, and Kathy Ballata seconds, to amend the Town's General Bylaw, Article 8, by inserting into Section 4C definitions the word "supply" to the phrase "state of water conservation" in the second sentence, so that it now reads "state of water supply conservation." And a new definition for "nonessential outdoor water use" as presented in the warrant. And by modifying the language in Section 4, subsection E, by striking the words in the first sentence, quote, "the use of water," unquote, and replacing it with the words, quote, "nonessential outdoor water use," unquote, so that the sentence now reads, or would read, "Restricted water uses. A declaration of a state of water supply conservation shall include one or more of the following restrictions, conditions, or requirements, limiting nonessential outdoor water use as necessary to protect the water supply." And the Select Board recommends approval. The Finance Committee takes no position. And this is a majority vote to amend the general bylaw. Remarks, Mr. Round.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 8 of our town's bylaws, entitled Water and Sewer Commissioners, discusses the use of water in our town. Much of it deals with water use restriction rules, but our bylaw does not include the term "nonessential outdoor water use" in its definitions. For the Department of the Environmental Protection's request, this definition will be added to Section 4C of our bylaws, as the moderator previously stated. Further, we clarify the use of another defined term, "state of water conservation," in two places in the text of Article 8. And where all these changes occur in Article 8, including the placement of the term "nonessential outdoor water use," should be seen in the slide that is shown. Now each time a water ban is issued or updated, public reminders about what consumers can and cannot do will be publicized. We recommend your approval for Article 14.
Thank you, Mr. Round. Is there discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Nahadas.
It's a little confusing. I'm wondering if I can water my garden between dusk and dawn, at dusk and dawn with this, or if that's against the law all of a sudden.
Mr. Round.
Yes. Okay. There will be a program that our Director of Communications will implement in the coming month or two that will describe exactly all of the stages of water restrictions and what you can and cannot do. And there are three stages that are promulgated by the state. So that will be clarified in the coming couple of months, I believe.
Maybe we should recommend to vote on it then, when it's clarified.
Do you want to respond, Mr. Round?
Well, we'd like to take care of this right now, because that will be a publicity campaign that will tell everybody what's going on. The state really has promulgated this definition and requires that we add it to our bylaws, independent of what happens in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Round.
Wendy Dixon, 295 Summer Street, again. So there are different gradations of water difficulty. Right now, there's a ban, I mean, it's not a ban, it's a water restriction, and so swimming pools can't be filled, right? All right, through the moderator to you, Mr. Round. And so that means that last summer, there was sort of a water, it was dicey all last summer long. So that means with this restriction, if anyone owns a swimming pool, or a splash pool, or whatever, this summer, we would not be able to use our pools. This is for clarification, if you could.
Chuck Dam, this is the Director of Public Works, Chuck Dam.
Right, so there's a little bit of a differentiation here, what John was just mentioning, and what is not included in the bylaw is the state issues the level of drought. This bylaw is just allowing the Select Board to issue the restriction to the customers, to the residents. So until the Select Board takes action, what the state is recommending is not, you know, the law of the land in Manchester at that point. So when the Select Board will issue the declaration of the water supply emergency that they are allowed to under this bylaw, that's when they would make the determination that it would or would not be, what would or would not be allowed. And the definitions for nonessential use are standard that are coming from the Water Management Act, and so that's why we're repeating them in the bylaw itself. So I hope that answers the question.
I'd like to ask Mr. Fettishfield to clarify the relationship between this proposed bylaw amendment and what the State Department of Environmental Protection is telling us.
Right, so that's what Chuck was just closing with, and that is that the state is requiring all localities to include this kind of language in the local regulations that the Board, Select Board, wearing their hat as a water commissioner, utilizes in judging whether or not the declaration needs to include these prohibitions. So as Chuck said, the state dictates the drought level, 1, 2, 3, or 4, and then the Board decides, do we need to enact a restriction? And then this provides the guideline to what those restrictions might contain. Does that help?
I think so. Further discussion? Okay, this is a majority. Way in the back. Yes, sir.
Jay Bothwick, 7 Boardman Ave. So I just want to make sure that I understand that the state is mandating this definition of nonessential outdoor water use. We're adopting the state definition, but we're not tying ourselves to a determination by the state of a water emergency, because our town water supply is much more plentiful than in the case of many other communities. And I just don't want to see us in a situation where, because the state mandates something that really isn't applicable to Manchester, that we put ourselves through a water ban unnecessarily.
Mr. Fettishfield.
Yeah, Chuck may want to chime in on this one as well. But in essence, yes, the Board has that capability or that authority. The state may slap our wrist occasionally if they feel that the town is abusing those guidelines. But nonetheless, it is the authority of the Board to make that final determination. The state could, if they wanted to, say, wait a minute, Manchester, why do you keep not imposing these stricter guidelines that we think you should be? The chances of that happening are not high, but it could.
Thank you, Mr. Fettishfield. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Kevin Leach, 33 Summer Street. I don't see any provision for enforcement of these new regulations, and I don't know how would somebody be managed or dealt with, would the Public Works Director write him a citation, or the Board of Selectmen issue a citation, or send the police by? Or is there existing process in the current bylaws?
Mr. Fettishfield. Mr. Fettishfield.
So yes, there are penalties within the existing bylaw that still pertain. I'm just quickly reminding myself what those are. And any person violating this bylaw shall be liable to the town in the amount of $100 for the first violation, and then $300 for each subsequent violation. And it's, the town has the ability to issue a ticket through the district court.
So would that be the police?
The Select Board has the ability to designate the enforcement, and it could be the police, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? This is a majority. Yes, Ms. Bryant.
Alitta Bryant, still 57 Old Essex. I'm really sorry, but some of the nonessential outdoor water use definitions are a little concerning. For the irrigation of publicly funded shade trees and trees in the public right-of-way, we need to water our trees. They are what help keep water supply. So, and also establishing a lawn, well, I'm not a big fan of lawns, but to stabilize soil around new construction or a Title V system.
Ms. Bryant, this list is a list of things, nonessential outdoor water use means a use that is not required for these purposes.
So you can do it.
I see.
Jody Morse, 11 Jersey Lane. So Alitta brought up trees, so I just had to chime in here. The exception for irrigation of public trees, publicly planted trees in the right-of-way is wonderful, because we don't want our trees to die. But we also want to encourage people to plant trees in their private yards. And if they plant a young tree and do not water it during a drought, which doesn't actually take a lot of water, because you're planting, you're just watering that tree, can we change or ask, do we have to adopt exactly what the state has given us? Or can we allow people to have an exception to water newly planted trees on their land?
Can you hear me? So I don't think the intention is to, you know, discourage people from watering their trees, especially if they are trying to establish them. Again, I think this is discretionary enforcement level, and I think the state will be looking for us to adopt the definition of nonessential use. Like I said, this is what they have in the Water Management Act, which allows us to be water suppliers. So I think, I agree with you that we need to allow these things. I don't think that we want to change the definition of nonessential use, even if it's, you know, maybe common sense to the people in this room, so that we can kind of have the best of both worlds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. Further discussion? Yes?
Jessica Lamoth, 21 Walker Road. This may be unpopular, but I hate the foot washers at Singing Beach if we're talking about conserving water. It is a complete waste that just goes and sits in the parking lot and evaporates. So I certainly hope that if we're talking about any bans where people can't water their new trees, or their vegetable gardens, or whatever, that we shut those darned things off as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamoth. Further discussion? Okay, this is a majority vote. If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, press 2. And abstained, press 3. The vote is 172 in favor, 19 opposed, with 6 abstentions, and the motion prevails. Article 15 is the report of the Community Preservation Committee. And Brian Solace moves the article as printed in the warrant with the clarification that the undesignated fund balances referenced our community preservation funds. And Jeff Delaney seconds. There are 10 items. Are there any holds on any of the 10 items? Mr. Morse?
Five.
Any other holds? Yes. Did you want to hold another item?
Number 2.
Number 2. Any other holds? Okay, Ms. Bates, why don't you tell us what you think about number 2?
I think our bathhouse is horrible. I don't even like to walk into it. I hate the idea of taking a shower in there. And the idea of putting money into it, it just makes me very sad. I think we should let it rot and get a new one.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Could you tell us what you really mean? Mr. Morse, number 5.
Gar Morse, 11 Jersey Lane. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I love affordable housing. I own a fair amount of affordable housing. I'm in favor of affordable housing. We have an Affordable Housing Trust that was created by this group about six years ago. You might want to ask, how many units do we have? And I can answer, zero. We have no affordable housing units that have been created by our Affordable Housing Trust. By the way, the people on the Affordable Housing Trust are wonderful people. They meet, they work hard, and they explain to me that their job is not impossible. They just haven't been able to do it. Now, we're giving them another $200,000 under this booklet, and that'll bring their total up to about $1,007,000. Correct me if I'm wrong, maybe a little more than that. They haven't done anything, and giving them more money to do it with probably won't solve the problem. So I am suggesting, and I'd like to move, that we reduce that $200,000 not to zero, but to the minimum required for housing under the Community Preservation Act. There's a minimum. It's, I believe it's a 10%. And whether it's 10% of 897,000, or 10% of some other number, I'm not sure. But I'm sure we can figure it out with the help of our town accountant. Now, this is not because I'm against affordable housing, nor do I impugn in any way the performance or attitude of the people on the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm just suggesting we be realistic. Two minutes.
Good timing, Gar. I'm going to ask Town Council to identify for us what the number, the minimum required by the CPA would be.
10%.
10% of what number?
Of the annual.
I'm not going to do it.
Andrew can do it. It's like, it's maybe around $50,000.
Yeah, it's like $45,000.
Yeah.
10% of the revenues.
So. Where's the town?
45,000 is the right number?
Not town and state.
And do you accept 45,000, Mr. Morse? And is that seconded? Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir. In the way in the back.
Testing. Thank you, Alan, for recognizing me. I'm John Feuerbach, 5 Harold Street, Chairperson of the Affordable Housing Trust. I want to acknowledge Mr. Morse for his interest in developing affordable housing in Manchester. The AHT shares his frustration that we've been unable to develop new affordable housing units after years of searching out development sites and partners. We'd be against what he just proposed. The funding has been very important, and it's enabled the trust to go from zero in 2016 to about the $1,005,000, $1,006,000. We recognize the obstacles of development due to a lack of suitable sites in town and the high cost of construction. We wrote about it in recent editions in The Cricket. The trust, however, is limited in power in that we're not a development company. We can be a willing partner that can help a private developer with our insights, our development experience, and access to AHT funding, provided by the CPA annually and with town support. That could be combined with state funding to finance a community affordable housing development. So what we do is we need to find a suitable development partner to work with, a property owner willing to sell at a reasonable cost, and a combination of private and public financing to create a meaningful housing project. Now, Mr. Morse, at our last meeting, said that all really have his excuses. And we've tried to point out to him that we're, we've been making progress on a number of potential projects, including the Housing Authority properties. And we're currently in contact with four of five owners of possible properties. But that affordable community of housing takes years to put together. We hope that you, the voters, can appreciate the efforts we've made so far, again, as we've outlined in The Cricket recently. Mr. Morse made the same comments at last year's town meeting. His amendment was defeated. This year, he cast a sole vote in opposition to our CPC funding as a member of the Finance Committee. It appears that his position is that withholding funds from the AHT will somehow make us work harder, when in fact, we'll need every dollar available to attract developers, to pursue projects to fruition. And just in closing, my term on the AHT ends in a few months. It's been a pleasure serving the town as a Chairperson of the AHT, and I urge the new moderator to appoint a person with the commitment and experience to continue this work, no matter how long it might take.
Thank you, Mr. Feuerbach. Further discussion?
Gar Morse, 11 Jersey Lane. I appreciate Mr. Feuerbach's efforts. I'm in favor of affordable housing. It just seems like it's been five years. We give them more money every year, and nothing happens. So I'm suggesting that our leadership possibly may look at different modes of addressing this problem, as opposed to, it wasn't Einstein who said it, but if you do the same thing over and over again, and it doesn't work every time, maybe you need to relook. But I, again, Mr. Feuerbach, you've done a great job in the efforts that you have made. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. Further discussion? Okay, so we'll vote first on Mr. Morse's amendment, which is to reduce item number 5 from $200,000 to $45,000. If you're in favor of that, please press 1. If you're opposed, 2. And if you're abstaining, press 3. The vote is 49 in favor, 128 against, with four abstentions. So Mr. Morse's amendment does not prevail. And we'll vote now on the main motion. Yes, Mr. Fettishfield.
Just in light of...
You're not...
Just in light of the...
You're not on.
No, there we go. Okay. Just in light of the not-so-subtle comment about the bathhouse, it is in next year's Capitol, 27 Capitol, to do a major replacement. So we'll get there eventually.
Thank you, Mr. Fettishfield. And thank you, Ms. Bates, for encouraging that. Okay, so we'll vote now on the main motion. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe that under the State Community Preservation Act, a minimum of 10% of the revenues collected have to be spent on each of three purposes: historic preservation, affordable housing, and open space. So my question is, which of these projects falls under the required minimum for open space?
Mr. Fettishfield.
So numbers 2, 3, and 4 are open space/recreation. Number 5 was affordable housing, as is number 6. And then historic preservations are 7, 8, 9, and 10. And so the requirement is not to spend it each year, but you have to at least set it aside if you're not spending it. But the 10% requirement is either spend or set aside.
Thank you, Mr. Fettishfield. Meeting ready to vote on the main motion? If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstained, press 3. Vote is 170 in favor, 12 opposed, with 1 abstention, and the motion prevails. Article 16 is an appropriation for the town's Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund. Catherine Bolata moves, and Ann Harrison seconds, the motion to raise and appropriate $330,000 to be deposited into the town's Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund, subject to said appropriation being expended from the trust fund only for the purposes authorized by Section 20 of Chapter 32b of the General Laws of the Commonwealth. I recognize Sarah Melish for remarks.
The Finance Committee is pleased to provide an update on the OPEB Trust and its impact on future budgets. Thanks to persistent residents, the town created an OPEB Trust Fund so we can make contributions for post-retirement health and life insurance benefits during an employee's active employment. Prior to having the trust, we had an unfunded liability for these post-retirement benefits and paid for these benefits from current taxes despite the fact the employees are retired. In order to fully pre-fund this unfunded liability, we recommend a $330,000 contribution to the trust this year, $360,000 next year, and $150,000 in fiscal year '28, at which point we will continue contributions to the trust for these retirement benefits during an employee's active employment, and will begin paying the insurance premiums for retirees out of the trust fund rather than from the operating budget. This will provide over $500,000 annual savings to fund capital projects in accordance with our 25-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstained, press 3. Vote is 166 in favor, 4 opposed, with 2 abstentions, and the motion prevails. Article 17 pertains to acceptance of a state law known as the Hero Act for Veterans. The Select Board recommends approval, and the Finance Committee now recommends approval also. And Jeff Delaney moves, and John Round seconds, that the town vote to accept the provisions of General of General Laws, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause twenty-two I, known as the Hero Act for Veterans, as presented in the warrant. Is there discussion? This is a majority vote. If you're in favor, press one. Opposed, press two. Abstained, press three. Voting is open. And the vote is a hundred and fifty-seven in favor, three opposed, with seven abstentions, and the motion prevails. Article eighteen pertains to, uh, revolving fund appropriations. We do this every year. The Finance Committee recommends approval, and the Select Board recommends approval. Brian Solace moves the article is printed in the warrant. Ann Harrison seconds the motion. Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press one. Opposed, two. Abstained, press three. And voting is open. The vote is a hundred and sixty-two in favor, five opposed, and one abstention. Motion prevails. Article nineteen relates to the Manchester-by-the-C Board of Health's zero nicotine generation ban. Brian Solace moves, and Catherine Bellata seconds, to instruct the Manchester Board of Health to repeal the ban the board adopted on November the first, twenty-twenty-four that prohibits the sale of tobacco products to individuals born after January one, two thousand and four, beginning April one, twenty-twenty-five. Now, town council has advised us that the meeting cannot repeal or rescind regulations properly adopted by the Board of Health, nor can we instruct the board to repeal them. So if the meeting approves this motion, it will be non-binding. Remarks, Brian Solace.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Moderator. On October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, without much fanfare, the Board of Health passed an ordinance banning the sale of tobacco products to any individual born on or after January first, two thousand and twenty-four. This ban, known as the generational restriction. At this hearing, the majority of the speakers were representatives of special interest groups with no ties to our community. The mission of the Board of Health per the town website is to protect the public health of the town of Manchester by the Sea through enforcement of health codes and regulations while promoting a healthy community. Nowhere does it say to create bans or bylaws that impinge on individuals' personal choices. The Board of Health has strayed from their mission of health codes to a much more draconian approach of removing personal responsibility. This ban is not about public health, but another example of government overreach. New twenty-one-year-olds should be allowed to decide for themselves what they can and cannot do. It is not up to five appointed individuals to make those choices for them. Finally, we acknowledge the difficulty that downtown businesses have. The local varieties store accounts on a walk-in business where people go in, grab a newspaper, a cup of coffee, and a pack of smokes. This ban will only drive more business out of town. I recognize that this is just an advisory, but please join me and send a clear message that this ban has not, is not, uh, that this ban is not necessary and outside the purview of the Board of Health's stated mission. Thank you.
I need a mic here. Thank you, Mr. Solace. And I'll recognize Board of Health member Leah Peavy for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just for a little background.
Could you give us your address, please?
Oh, sorry. Leah Peavy, um, six Rockwood Heights Road, Manchester, and I'm a member of the Manchester Board of Health, um, also a healthcare provider, having worked in the field of oncology for over twenty years. Um, the state required Manchester's Board of Health to update our out-of-date tobacco regulations to be in compliance with the current state regulations. Per Massachusetts General Laws, local boards of health must adopt regulations that are at least as stringent as the state regulation and are able to add more restrictive modifications that protect the health and welfare of residents. The Manchester Board of Health proposed adding a generational ban on the sale of nicotine products in Manchester to those born on or after January first, two thousand and four, similar to, um, one passed in Brookline in two thousand and twenty and upheld unanimously by the Massachusetts Supreme Court in two thousand and twenty-four. It does not affect existing nicotine users over the age of twenty-one. The goal is not to take nicotine products away from existing users, but to protect future generations from the health hazards of nicotine addiction. The Board of Health's reasoning is as follows. Tobacco use remains the leading cause of preventable disease and death in the United States, causing more than four hundred and eighty thousand deaths per year, or about thirteen hundred deaths per day in the U.S. Worldwide, it kills more than eight million people a year. Cigarette smoking causes diseases of almost every organ of the human body, including multiple cancers, heart disease, stroke, type-two diabetes, and other, um, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. Forty-nine point two million, or nearly one in five, U.S. adults reported current tobacco use in two thousand and twenty-two. Ninety-nine percent of cigarette smokers who smoke daily try smoking by the age of, um, twenty-six. Nicotine has been found to be as addictive as cocaine and heroin. Less than one in ten adults who smoke cigarettes succeed in quitting each year. So the, it's an illusion that people have a choice of quitting once they've started. The Board of Health's motivation is to prevent future generations from nicotine addiction. The Board of Health held a public hearing, as mentioned, on the proposed tobacco regulations in October, two thousand and twenty-four. The public hearing was advertised twice in the Cricket, at least two weeks in advance, and the notice was posted on the website. It was also highlighted in the Gloucester Daily Times. Both stores currently selling tobacco products were invited to the meeting. One store chose not to participate. The other store asked for an extension of the, um, the effective date, which was granted. One resident requested a postponement of the vote. No other Manchester residents participated. However, numerous attendees from around the state presented arguments both for and against the nicotine generation ban. The board ultimately adopted the proposed tobacco regulation by a vote of three to one. The Boards of Health, um, in Stonem, Wakefield, Winchester, Reading, Malden, Melrose, Concord, Chelsea, Belcher Town, and Needham have all passed generational tobacco bans, as did the City Council of Newton. State legislation for a nicotine-free generation was also introduced into the Massachusetts State Senate in January of two thousand and twenty-five. Um, and as stated, um, a town meeting vote is non-binding, given that the Massachusetts General Laws structure, the local Board of Health Authority requires that a Massachusetts court determine the validity of a Board of Health decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peavy. Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Bates.
We went through prohibition in this country. It was not a success. I really feel that laws on these things are not successful. I hate smoking. I'm very happy when nobody around me is smoking, but I don't think it will be successful. So I'm sorry to see, I see this as an overreach, and I'm sorry to see laws on this. It is, has to be a personal choice.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Further discussion? Ms. Peavy?
Leah Peavy, still of six Rockwood Heights Road. You know, a few years ago, the smoking age had been eighteen, and then Massachusetts, um, the town started passing, boards of health started passing laws to raise it to, um, the age of twenty-one, which is what it is currently right now. And then, you know, Massachusetts did, and the rest of the country did as well. We're not banning smoking, um, it's just for the sale of the, we're just trying to protect the youth in our town from becoming addicted. Nicotine's different than something like alcohol because nicotine is so, so highly addictive. Like I said, it's on par with, um, heroin or cocaine. Um, and so we're trying to prevent that. And also, smoking used to be allowed in public spaces, and that was also stopped. And I do feel like overall tobacco use has, um, has declined.
Thank you, Ms. Peavy. Yes, sir? Wait, come, wait, go to the mic, please.
Is this one working? Yep. Uh, Mark Allen, Spire Rock Hill. Quick question for the Select Board. Says the Select Board, uh, recommends a vote of yes on this. Just curious from the Select Board, why?
Ms. Harrison.
The, you're right, the Select Board voted in favor of, of this, um, article of, and I'm afraid that, that we agreed with those people who felt that adults should be able to make their own choices.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? This is a majority vote. Again, it's non-binding. If you're in favor, press one. Opposed, two. Abstained, press three. Vote is eighty-one in favor, seventy-six opposed, with four abstentions. So the motion prevails. Article twenty. I'm going to read this motion. It's a little bit long, so bear with me, please. Ann Harrison moves that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for the enactment of a special law authorizing the town to adopt a bylaw restricting the use of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides, as set forth in the warrant, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court. And she further moves that the Select Board is authorized to approve amendments within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. And Jeff Delaney seconds the motion. Now, this motion obviously differs from the warrant article and therefore raises a question of whether it's within the scope of the warrant. Because the article contains the phrase, quote, "an act authorizing the town to adopt a bylaw," unquote, I'm satisfied that it adequately conveys the intention of the sponsors to seek an act of the legislature. I conclude that the article gave reasonable notice to the voters of the subject matter. Select Board recommends approval. The Finance Committee takes no position. This is a simple majority vote. Remarks, Ann Harrison.
Thank you for waiting so long and being so patient with this meeting. Article twenty asks the town meeting to ask the Select Board, to ask the Greater General Court, to pass a home rule petition that will allow Manchester to regulate the use of certain specific rodent poisons on private property in town. That's a little complicated, but in fact, the state says the towns cannot regulate this, these poisons. So what we have to do is, I want the opinion of, of the town, that this is something we want to follow. Based on that, the Select Board will petition the court, and then, assuming that, that the, um, court agrees with us, um, then we will start working on, um, regulations. More specifically, um, these poisons called second-generation anticoagulant rodenticide, or S-G-A-Rs, SCARs, um, kill rodents slowly, making them attractive prey to hawks, eagles, fowl, owls, foxes, and other predators. The animals and birds poison themselves by eating dying rodents. Wildlife protection organizations report that over ninety-five percent of the raptors that they treat or analyze have S-G-A-Rs in their bodies. Angel Memorial treats fifty pets a year for S-G-A-R poisoning. Even though Massachusetts limits the use of S-G-A-Rs to licensed pet control services, wildlife and pets suffer their effects. On the other hand, they're very effective at dealing with rodent infestations. If Article twenty passes and the legislature approves the petition, the next step will be to develop appropriate regulations for Manchester. The town will develop those regulations in open meetings, taking public comments. When the regulations are ready, they will be presented to a future town meeting for approval. Please approve, approve Article twenty as the first step in a long process to save our raptors.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press one. Opposed, press two. Abstained, press three. And voting is open. Vote is a hundred and forty-seven in favor, seventeen opposed, with two abstentions. So the motion prevails. Now, the last two articles are going to take us very little time. That's good news. But I do want to take a moment to introduce our new town administrator, Tony Barletta, who is with us this evening. And Article twenty-one, I'll recognize Ann Harrison for a motion to pass over.
Article twenty-one was a reaction to, um, construction noise and the fact that the penalty for construction noise is low. The proponent has asked me to pass over because the, what, the remedy that she suggested is not available to her. Is that fair?
That, that is fair. The penalty, as you can see from the article, which we proposed, was five hundred dollars for a first offense and doubling thereafter. There is a state statute, town council has informed us, that limits, uh, the penalty to three hundred dollars, and the proponent felt that was not adequate, and so she elected to pass over it. Asked, she couldn't be here tonight. She asked Ann to make the motion in her stead. And is that seconded? It's seconded. If you're in favor of passing over Article twenty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. I so declare it. Article twenty-two. John Round moves to pass over, take no action under Article twenty-two. Kathy Bellata seconds the motion, and that's because we would only need to vote on Article twenty-two, under Article twenty-two, if we had changed the appropriations in Articles four and five, and we did not. So Kathy Bellata seconds the motion to pass over. If you're in favor of passing over, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. And Ann Harrison moves to dissolve the annual town meeting. John Round seconds the motion. If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. I declare the annual town meeting dissolved. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. I think I should return the applause because you did it. Thank you all very much.